Huh?
Did I leave my folder right here?
Uh, I took this. Did you want that? Good evening. Welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen, uh, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and I've unfortunately forgotten the date. Isn't that terrible?
Twenty-fifth.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-fifth.
Thank you. I knew that. Of Tuesday, November 25th. Uh, my name is Jim Leehan. To my left is Jeff Palumbo. Uh, our chairman is not with us this evening. He is picking up his daughter from college to come home for Thanksgiving. So, we will have a very brief agenda this evening, uh, with really just one topic. Um, so we like to defer any significant issues so that all three of us are present for those meetings. So, Mr. Hathaway, if you would, sir.
Sure.
Oh, my apologies. I did not introduce Mr. Hathaway, our town administrator, and Marion Harrington, our executive assistant.
All right. So, this is the meeting of Tuesday, November 25th, of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen. First order of business will be a tax rate classification hearing for fiscal year 2015 with our chief assessor, Mr. John Neese. Uh, we do have one action item. Uh, please consider approving the Santa Parade for December 7th, 2014. And, uh, we did have a couple of discussion items, but as Mr. Leehan said, we'll, uh, table those until our next meeting, uh, with Mr. Bugby in attendance. Uh, I should advise you that this meeting will be audio and videotaped. So, I believe we have Mr. Neese here to put on a, uh, we have a PowerPoint presentation which we'll put up on the screen, and, uh, he can talk to us about our tax rate and the classification.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, you do have a revised copy of the PowerPoint that I sent to you yesterday with, uh, with some additional changes, but, uh, we have an updated picture of Town Hall with the new siding. Um, you're gonna click through this for me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can go to the next page. Uh, we did run the required newspaper ad in the Sun Chronicle for tonight's hearing. Um, the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2015 is seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents per thousand. Uh, I'm gonna move quickly, but please feel free to interrupt me at any time. Um, and in general, the different classes of property increased anywhere, really from zero, no increase to three and a half percent. Um, if we go to the next slide, it gives a little look at the statistics. Uh, residential property, which is really single-family and condominiums combined, went up about 3.5% on average. Commercial property, about 2%. Uh, basically, no change to industrial property. Uh, but I tell you this every year, um, statistics are very deceiving. We always put up a sample street for you. Uh, we use a different street every year, but even looking at this chart, you can see that, uh, there are properties that, uh, went down, uh, you know, a half to 1% in value. Um, and then there is one property that actually went up almost 25% in value. So, what you really need to do is look at every property in town individually, um, to see whether it basically stayed the same, went down, or, uh, increased in value. Uh, and we give our residents the opportunity to, to do that. Uh, we publish this notebook and leave it on the assessor's counter. We also put a copy in the library, and we also put the information on the town website on the assessor's page. The first part of the notebook is an alphabetical street listing of every property in town, and it shows the fiscal year 2014 value and the fiscal year 2015 value. So, they can see, uh, if their property changed, or the neighbors', or other streets in town. The second part of the notebook has a property record card on every one of our arms-length transfers in calendar year 2013, which is the basis for the, uh, for the current tax rate and the current value. Um, and, excuse me, that'll be available again, um, probably, uh, Monday of next week. Uh, the following page, uh, just gives some interesting... There we go.
Turn it up.
Uh, statistics from the Warren Group, which, uh, it actually tracks, uh, the median sale price in Norfolk all the way back to 1988, but we've just run the chart from 2005, which was really the peak, uh, here in Norfolk, up through the present time, and it shows the, uh, the change over time. Uh, 2014 statistics are not quite in yet, um, only through October at this point. Next one, we put in a new slide this year. Uh, and this basically comes from the, um, from the Gateway System, the Department of Revenue System, uh, and the recap that we file every year. Uh, we use sort of the same scenario. We went back to 2005. Uh, we looked at just single families in this instance. Uh, we took the total assessed value for single families, the parcel count, uh, for single families, and what the average assessed value was in, uh, in each one of those years.
I mean, this is, to me, this is, you know, an important factor that will, that John will probably come up several times during this conversation. Um, if you look at 2007, the average single-family assessed value was 477,600. Uh, seven, eight years later, we're still at, uh, in 2015, we're only at 430,500. So, you know, the tax rate obviously is, is a very, it's a, it's a very complex, uh, calculation on one hand when you're entering enterprise funds and local receipts, et cetera, but at the end of the day, it's really looking at your tax levy, uh, which goes up two and a half percent, plus the new growth, and, and divides by the total assessed value of single-family homes. Um, well, total assessed value of all property in town, but, uh, the single-family homes are the biggest driver. Uh, and when your average value is still $47,000, less than it was eight years ago, um, even though we are, uh, we, and I mean, you know, you, me, and town meeting are keeping a control of our, uh, of our budget increases, and really limited to 2,000, to the two and a half percent since 2005, when we had our last general fund override, uh, the rate is going up faster than that because the, the assessment, the, the average assessment, which is the denominator of the, of the calculation, is, is gone down and has not come back from that 2007 value. So...
Hey, John?
I'm sorry, yes?
If you go to the other page and you look at the median price...
Sales prices? Is that what you're looking at?
Median sales price.
Yeah.
Um, if you look at 2005 and 2010, in that 10-year period, the, uh, there was a 20% reduction in the sale price of homes, 505 to 416.
Right.
Um, and we all know that's, that's when the bubble burst, so to speak, in 2008, but, and, and reflected probably two years later in sale prices. But, the question I have, if you, if you look at 2012 to 2013, you, you had almost a $50,000 increase on a lower number.
Mm-hmm.
I would, you know, I'm not a realtor, but I would have thought that '13 and '14 would have even been a better year, and that we would have shown at least that, if not more, off of the base number, and yet we show substantially less.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're talking about a $50,000 increase between 212 and 213, and then a $12,000, $14,000 increase between '13 and '14.
All I can tell you is what I think. I mean, Jack and I had a discussion about this earlier today. Um, you know, this, this is a very small look at the market for Norfolk, because when you're talking about the sales, you're only looking at 100 or 150 or 200 properties out of 4,000 total properties in Norfolk. And, you know, one of, uh, one of the factors that I think might play into this appreciation, because even from 2012 to 213, on these, this median sale price, I think the increase is about 12%, um, is that oftentimes people who are selling their property might make certain improvements to the property before they sell, whether it's cosmetic, such as interior or exterior painting, or landscaping, or whether it's something more significant, like, uh, finishing the basement, or putting in a new kitchen, or something like that. And that plays into, you know, the sale price and the appreciation of these properties. And again, it's a very small look at the 4,000-plus properties that we have in town.
That would also play into the assessed value, because that's, you know, especially if they're putting in a new kitchen or things of that nature.
Well, well, it would, but again, I don't think the statistics show that it plays the same way between the sale prices and the assessed value, because the sale prices are showing a more significant increase than the three and a half percent increase we're seeing, um, on property values this year. So, if now you go back to the following page on assessed value, you see a more reasonable, not a more reasonable, but you certainly see a different, uh, difference in terms of percentages on the assessed value over those properties. And again, I think, you know, because now you're taking those 200 sales and that 12% or whatever that number is from one year to another, and now it's sort of being spread out more over 4,000 different properties. Again, some of which go down in value, some of which increase in value.
I understand.
It looks like 2012 was an anomaly, as far as the Warren Group data, and I, you know, because you've got, um, you know, fairly significant decline going in and coming out, you know, there's a smoother trend, you know, if you look at your information, um, on the following page. So...
The sales data's been driven by new home sales as well, and, and we've had at least three subdivisions that I can think of off the top of my head, where there are substantially large-sized new homes that have started, you know, between Mr. Whittleton's, uh, over at, uh, over Winston and Churchill there, uh, Mr. Petrosi's, Fernridge, and then the, uh, the Pulte Homes. I mean, and those are all homes that are minimally at $600,000, and, and some are going up to 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars. So, those are, those are driving that much smaller subset of, of transactions up.
And I think one of the other things to look at here, too, I mean, Mr. Leehan, you know, you commented on 2005 to 2010 and about a 20% differential, but now when you go from 2010 and jump up to 2014, you see that we still haven't made that back up yet. We're, instead of 20% differential, we're maybe back about 10% over that four- or five-year period. So, um, you know, the, the values are trending up, and I sat here last year and, and, you know, I told you that I hoped that our tax rate would be very similar this year, or maybe even go down. Uh, in some communities, it has. I mean, we'll get to that at the end. In some other communities, it, it, you know, still has increased. But, you know, we all know, and you know better than I, because you deal with these issues more than I do, but, you know, it's a combination of so many factors. You know, the budget was actually a little higher this year. Um, even though you do a tremendous job keeping it at a, at a good level, the, the receivables were less this year, and we did have about $50 million in increased value, um, in Norfolk over last year, but it wasn't enough to offset, you know, all of the different variables that were involved.
Now, unfortunately, John, I do understand this.
I know you do. I know you do.
I guess I kinda wish I didn't.
So, um, you know, and, and we go through this every year, too, but very quickly, some of the reasons property can go up or down, there can be an addition, there can be market conditions, there can be fire or demolition, uh, there can be permits, new construction renovations, any of those types of issues. Uh, again, which is why it's important to look at the properties individually. So, this is just a little capsule on the averages. The average single family is now assessed at 430,500. At the proposed single rate at this point, uh, seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, that's an average tax bill of about 7,700. The condominium at 375.9 with an average bill of 6,700. Uh, a commercial property at 620,900 with a bill of 11,100, and an industrial property at 201,000 with a bill of 3,600 dollars. The next four pages actually is a copy of the tax rate recap. Um, it's something new this year that we put in. We thought it might be of interest to the residents. Uh, it is public information, and it's available on the Gateway website. Um, so, we thought, um, I'm not gonna take you through all of the pages, but, um, you know, it basically outlines, uh, you know, the income and the expenses that we need to deal with, uh, in terms of...
John, do you remember the residential number last year, the percentage?
Um, the, the total residential value?
No, the, the number. This is 93.1 currently. Do you remember what it was last year?
It's very similar.
Wasn't it 94 and change?
Um, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I could certainly check easily enough.
I did not, don't worry.
It is very similar to what it was.
Well, I know it hasn't changed a lot, but I...
So, after we go through those four pages, we get to the, um, classification options, and this is what you will need to decide on ultimately at the, at the end of the meeting, whether to have a single rate or a split rate. But, you know, this again shows the different classes of property and the percentages of the total. Uh, we don't have a residential or a small commercial exemption. Uh, the estimated levy, um, you know, based on, um, you know, the value of the property, the rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents. And, it, looks like some of that is kind of missing, but anyway, um, you know, we, again, we go through this every year. You know, if, if people have a problem with their value, they come to me, but I don't set the tax rate. The assessor's office does not set the tax rate in town. It's really a function of town meeting and the residents who attend town meeting and, and the whole budget process. Um, so, once that is done, the formula to determine the tax rate is very simple. Uh, we take the tax levy, so we have the, um, amount of money that we need to, to raise based on the budget. We offset that with all types of receivables. That gives us the tax levy. We very simply divide that by the total, uh, real and personal property value of the town for fiscal year 2015, and on a proposed single rate, it comes out to seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents. It is your job to make a determination on whether to have a single rate or a split rate, but it is my job to show you the various options. Uh, you can select a single rate or a split rate based on any one of these shifts. Uh, basically, we just show you two of them. Uh, we could do any one of them, but, um, because of the size of this, I put it onto two pages, but, um, basically, after we, after those two pages, we show you what type of a difference it would mean for both residential property owners and commercial and industrial property owners. So, this would be a 125 split. The next one will be 150. We, we're still obviously using the same average values. So, if we went to a, uh, 125 rate, the tax rate for residential property would change from 17.86 to 17.53. When you do those calculations, instead of 7,700 dollars per year, uh, the residential, uh, single-family house would be about 150 dollars less. The condominium would be about 100 dollars less. At the same time, if you're reducing the residential rate, you're increasing, uh, at the 125 shift, you're increasing the commercial, industrial, and personal property rate to 22.33. Jack, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened there either.
Happened here. Um, so I guess the best thing would be go back a few... Well, actually, I can read it. I have it. Because it's, it's, uh, giving you the, uh, it's giving you the residential condominium value for a commercial property, which is not right on the screen. But on your PowerPoint, it is correct. So, the commercial property with the same, uh, average assessment of 620,900, uh, instead of paying 11,100, would pay an additional 2,800 dollars. There it is.
I don't know why.
An additional 2,800 dollars per year, and the industrial property would pay an additional 900 dollars per year. The next page is the 150 shift, uh, and in this scenario, the residential rate would be 17.21. A single-family property owner would save about 300 dollars a year. A condominium owner would save about 225 dollars per year. Um, a commercial property, uh, the, uh, would pay an additional 5,500 dollars in tax, and an industrial property owner would pay an additional 1,800 dollars in tax. Stop me if I'm going too fast. I know we've been through this before. We go through it every year. I don't wanna belabor the issue, but certainly...
What is the, um, percent of commercial and Walpole and Rentham? What is their split? Do you know?
Um, again, I could tell you in five minutes. I could walk to my office and could come back. Um, you know, right now, I don't know what it will be for this year, because it does change every year, and until the tax rate is set, um, and until the information is printed, I don't know. Usually, can we go to the last slide, or?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I know, I know Rentham is about 30% commercial, because of that...
I can pull it up on the, once we get through this slide, I can pull it up on the DOR website.
Yeah. In, in theory, um, you know, or the theory behind the split is if you get to somewhere around 20%...
Right, no, I understand.
An 80/20 difference, but there are some that are obviously less than that, so you can do whatever you would like. But, um, you know, since we are even earlier than usual in the tax rate-setting process, uh, this chart is, uh, pretty slim in terms of information this year. Um, but, um, you know, as, as you look down, um, first of all, in the first column, the asterisk does signify a community with a split rate, so obviously, the residential rate is gonna be lower, uh, driven by the higher percentage of commercial and industrial property and a higher rate there. Uh, Franklin has set their tax rate. Uh, their rate increased, I think that's 39 cents, uh, or about two and a half percent. Uh, they are at an 80/20 split, um, but they still have a single tax rate, because they have a substantial amount of commercial and industrial property to keep their rate low. Um, there are some communities here that were higher than, um, even with the proposed single rate in Norfolk for this year, there are communities that were higher even last year. I'm not sure what will happen with all of those tax rates until we have the information. Uh, Medfield actually went down a little bit. Uh, Medway went down, um, about 3%. Uh, Mendon stayed about the same, uh, and Southborough went down a little bit. But, again, um, on the ones where the rate is set, uh, we do have the percentage of residential and commercial and industrial properties. On the other ones, I could look at last year's chart if you want me to run down and get it and give you all those numbers.
Now, Holliston's got a fair amount of commercial. I'm surprised their tax rate is almost 20 dollars.
Yeah, Holliston, uh, and, and Hopkinton and Sharon have, um, you know, traditionally had a fairly high rate, but I don't know what will happen with those, with those rates this year. I mean, of the few that we have, we really only have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, other than Norfolk. Um, and 1, 2, I think 3 of them are down, uh, 1's down a penny, 1's down 16 cents. Uh, Medway is down somewhat substantially at 60 cents. I'm not sure why. Um, and Franklin is actually up a little, about the same percentage that we are.
Uh, Jim, to recap some of your questions, then, our residential from last year was 93.1061.
93.1?
1061.
So, it's the same. You're right, sir.
Uh, you wanted to know, uh, Rentham?
Rentham, I think, or Walpole, he asked.
Uh, have they set their tax rate?
No, you won't be able to find that. I mean, I can get last year's PowerPoint.
No, it's, it's okay. It's okay.
No, I was just gonna pull up Rentham's. Rentham's 76% residential, 17.5% commercial, 2.3% industrial, and, and 3% personal property. They have a small, small business exemption as well.
I mean, our only, the only vote we get is a split rate. We don't, uh, we don't have any say in this. It's disappointing. I thought the rate would go down this year.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to, I wanted to...
I know we had that one-time payment.
Yeah.
HOD, and that, that skewed it. That's almost 1%.
Yeah, that was one thing I wanted to just put up on the screen and, you know, just talk about. Sorry, my vision is not as good as it used to be.
Jeff, lots of comments?
Well, you know, obviously disappointed, as I think, um, we all are, that we were hoping to keep that rate in check. Um...
Can I, can I just go through this, two quick slides, real quick, and then, uh...
Sure.
This, this information I have up on the board and you have a handout on is just, shows you the tax rate, um, and then also gives you a little bit of information on the debt exclusions that the town has voted in the past. Um, so, the, up above that dark line is 2015, and below the line is 2014. So, um, if you take our tax levy of 27 million dollars, 27.4 million dollars this year, and divide that by our, our total values of 1.5 billion, you get a tax rate of 17.86. But when we do, when we do the tax rate, which is a, kind of a group effort between the treasurer, the accountant, uh, John, and myself, um, one of the things that we do is we add in all the debt exclusions after we calculate out, uh, the tax levy. So, the additional burden on the taxpayers, if you will, for the, the debt exclusions are, we have the two library, um, projects, and one is really just the, the plans, and then one is the construction. Those add on, uh, 2 cents and 12 cents, or a total of 14 cents onto the tax rate. The King Philip Junior High School adds on 12 cents this year, uh, and 13 cents, uh, for the senior high school. Oh, did I do this right? Uh, no, sorry. 13 cents for the junior high school and 40 cents for the high, senior high school. Uh, the elementary school, the HL of Day project, is, this is the first year that it's, has no impact, and that's important. I'll get that to in a minute. And then the Freeman Kennedy School, which is obviously the, the grades 3 through 6 project, um, is a dollar and 1 cent onto the tax rate. So, if we backed out all of those projects, our tax rate would be down to 16.19. And I, I put up last year's debt exclusions just for a point of information, and this is part of the problem we have with the tax rate this year. If, if, you know, part of the problem that I think everybody thought the rate was gonna go down, is that, while we didn't add any new debt, we had a, we had good news last year that is coming back to hurt us a little bit this year. Um, so all those same projects are still, are impacting the tax rate last year, um, to almost the same degree. Uh, a little bit, a little bit more last year, so 13 cents on the library versus 12 cents. Uh, 14 cents on the junior high school versus 13 cents. 43 cents on the high school versus 40 cents this year, and a dollar and 5 cents on the Freeman Kennedy School versus a dollar and 1 this year. So, it's getting better. Each year, we'll drop off, uh, somewhere 8 to 10 cents, um, on the tax rate from, as those projects, as the debt service goes down. But the one, uh, that's impacting us the most this year is the, last year, we received the last payment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority under the old reimbursement program. We received $325,000 a year to help pay for the debt service for the HL of Day project. So, last year, we had the unusual circumstance of, we had paid all the debt service, so it was no longer, and it, uh, we no longer had to put that onto the tax rate, but we actually received one more year of the reimbursement, uh, or the state's portion of their funding of the project. So, we actually received a $325,000, uh, relief on the tax rate, which was 22 cents. So, this year, the tax rate is bouncing back up by 22 cents, because we're not getting that credit that we got last year. Um, so that's part of the bad news. And then, if I could just, uh, if I can do this.
So, Jack, that, that credit, was that offset by an expense the prior year that we paid? Was it like a reimbursement?
The, the prior year, we had a $500,000 debt service, but we also received a $325,000 credit, so we had a, we had a, um, increase to the tax rate, if you will, of, of 175,000 or thereabouts, uh, onto the tax rate. So, last year was a, was, you know, um, last year, we saw the tax rate benefit from the HL of Day project, which the timing was good, because that was the first year that we really saw the full impact of the Freeman Kennedy, um, coming onto the tax rate. So, um...
So, Jack, if, using that logic...
Yep.
Looking at the, um, elementary school, which will come down a little, I mean, all of these numbers will come down next year.
Yep.
And somewhere probably 10 to 12 cents? Is that, my number's somewhat close to that?
Uh, I would, it, yeah, if the trend continues, and it, and it does, these things don't take huge jumps.
Right, and we haven't had any recap from the school building administration yet. We haven't had that finalized.
No, we haven't closed out the project, but, but we're, we're under budget, so that's...
No, no, but, but my point is, we haven't closed it out, and that should, that'll be closed out this fiscal year.
Yep.
So, the following year, we should receive a similar type of credit from the SBA, from the school building. We should get a payment that is not in this year's calculation, once we close out that project.
The Freeman, Freeman Kennedy project?
Yes.
No, no, because, because the rules changed. The, the HL of Day was under the old reimbursement program, where we had to borrow the entire funding for the project.
Correct, and then we got it back over the 20 years.
Yep. Uh, but it was on a, but it was, but it was delayed by a year.
Correct.
So, um, the Freeman Kennedy project, uh, the MSBA is paying all of their costs right up front.
So, they paid half the bill up front.
Yeah, yeah. We, on a cash, I mean, a real technical basis, we paid it, but they immediately paid us back.
Okay, so are we in arrears with them at all?
Are, uh, do they owe us money? Um, they owe us some money until they, until they finish closing out the project and finish all the audits. Not, not, not a huge amount of, um, funds. Um, I, I think, I, I don't know, until they finish the audit and tell us all the numbers, my suspicion is, the way that that will work is, um, if we have money left over in the project, that would be something that the town could vote to a, a similar type, transfer that money to a similar type project if they wanted to.
Or they could give it back to us, to the taxpayers.
Yeah. Well, if it's, if it's not borrowed money already, I don't know. Depends on how, if it's already borrowed.
Right, but you, you don't have to spend it.
Yeah, I don't know, having gone through this with, under the new MSBA program, their reimbursement isn't borrowed funds, so we probably could reduce the DE1 schedule, which is the schedule. So, you're right, you probably could see a reduction to the tax rate.
Okay. It's terrible to hold out hope for next year, but it, I mean, of course, who knows what the market's gonna do.
So, hopefully Christine can zoom in on that spreadsheet on the, that I can't read from here, but I can see it in front of me. So, just very quickly, with the tax rate on the right-hand column, if you look at, so really, we're going from, and I'm using, I'm using the tax levy, not the actual, I'm using the tax levy limit, not the tax levy. So, there's a slight difference, so sometimes I'm off by a penny. So, the raw rate, as I call it, is, you know, we're going from 1744 to 1787 on the levy limit, but really in the, we're going to 1786, but it's approximately 44 cents. How that is driven is because of the 2.5% growth, so we add 2.5% onto the tax levy, which we end up voting, you know, way back in May at town meeting. So, that's a 44 cent impact on the tax rate. We back out last year's debt, which is that spreadsheet that I showed you on the other page. That was a $1.54 relief, if you will, of backing out last year's debt. But then we add in this year's debt, which is $1.67. So, there's a 13 cent increase onto the tax rate from the change year to year on debt. So, those three components tell us that the rate should've gone up 56 cents, but then we take John's component of the whole calculation, and we add in the effects of the change in values of the properties, and the change in, this year, because of appreciation of properties, we saw the tax rate go down by 12 cents. So-
And that represents a 2% overall, right?
Yeah, yep.
So, that's your reconciliation, if you will?
Yeah.
And it ties with the prior sheet.
So, I try and make sure that, somebody asks me why the tax rate went up or down this year, I can give them a general guide as to why, and that this is why this year.
So, effectively, would our appreciation have to have been like 200 million rather than 50 million in order to be very similar in terms of last year's tax rate?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's 12 cents for the 50 million or so-
Yes.
And another 12, 24, 36, 48 cents.
That's right. So, we don't have any, let's, we don't have any additional costs associated other than the 2.5 for the following year. If that, let's take that assumption.
Correct.
We have about a 12, we have 12 cents coming off on debt, roughly 10 to 12, with no bump that we were experiencing on this tax rate. And if the appreciation stays the same at 2%, we'll go down about 6 cents. Assuming we go up 2.5 on the levy.
If we are up 44 cents from prop 2.5, if we are, if the debt goes down by 10-
10 to 12.
10 to, I call 12, so that's, now we're up 32 cents. And then the appreciation brings it down another 12 cents, then we're still up 20 cents, unless I'm missing something in your math. And I usually do miss something in your math, so.
Well, you forgot, don't forget the 2.5.
2.5 is up, brings it up 44 cents.
Would be a little bit more.
Would be a little bit more because it's on a bigger base.
So, it'll be about 46, 47.
Yep.
You're gonna take off 12.
I'm gonna take off 12 from the debt.
Right.
So, now I'm only up 35. And then I'm gonna drop it by 12 cents on the appreciation?
Well, if that's up, if it's up 2%, that'd be 12 to 14, well, it'd be a little higher. It'd be 14 cents, maybe.
So, I'm still up a little bit.
You're still up a little bit.
So, we gotta get the, we gotta get the values to go up a little more than 2% next year, which I think, you know, I'm no real estate expert, but I certainly, all the trends seem to be heading in that direction.
I'm hoping you'll see that. I mean, the 3.5 this year, I was thinking would have been closer to 5. I mean, it still wouldn't probably have given us a level tax rate, but I was surprised it wasn't, right, I was surprised it wasn't higher, and I'm certainly hoping it will be higher next year.
I mean, if you were at 5, you're talking 36. It would have been about a 10 cent difference on the tax rate.
I'd like to see about 7% next year. I'd like to see the 3.5 at least double, but-
Okay, well, is what it is. Mr. Plumb?
I follow the logic, which, you know, I like the way John has presented it, and the way Jack has reconciled the numbers. So, at least I feel good about that in terms of process. But we're gonna need to continue to be vigilant.
Well, we don't spend anything more than 2.5.
Yeah.
I mean, that's coming down. We don't spend a dime more than the 2.5 levy.
I mean, unless Bugby messes it up.
I doubt if he will. I mean, it's, we've had no overrides other than the school. I mean, it's the debt, it's the school.
Yeah.
Which is why I raised the issue I raised about the other situation.
You know, which, you know, I'm sure that there has been and will continue to be a positive effect on valuations in our town because of those investments. So, the question is, you know, you know, yeah, so we're not, there's no second guessing or anything like that.
No, 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 that's not, I'm just-
And I know that, Jim, I know that.
That's not my point.
But I think, you know, I mean, if you look at, I, I mean, because I also sit on the planning board and looking at the activity and the interest in more lot releases, et cetera, over at Fox Run, this continues to be a very desirable town.
What was the new growth number this year?
36, I think, in total.
36,600, which resulted in $637,000 of new tax revenue.
And I think we've been very fortunate with our new growth figure.
It's been great. It's been a lifesaver.
I wasn't quite sure it would be that high, but, you know, we look at everything that we can, and, you know, we do have Rivers Edge, which is pretty much finished now, which has been a big driver of that. But we do have Fox Run, the Pulte subdivision, which is coming online more and more, and-
And the medical building is now getting open? The medical building is now getting open?
Medical building, I mean, that's in at about 1.7 million in growth this year, and will be finished next year.
It's fully leased?
Fully leased.
Leased, yeah, that's right here.
And there are some other subdivisions I know coming online. They might be small, but-
So, new growth should be, should be another good year.
It's actually a little lower than last year. We were about 38 million, I think, last year. But we're close, we're close to that.
36 million, 36 million, you're in the ballpark.
Right.
Is the medical building's on?
When does the junior high come off the books?
I don't know, off the top of my head, it's, it-
Gotta be getting close.
I'll look, I don't know. The regional school keeps that debt schedule, it's tough to pull information out of him, but-
Well, the high school is 10, 12 years old?
Yeah, 2004, so right when I started, that they were finishing up the projects.
So, it's halfway.
Yeah.
They did do 20 years, didn't they?
I think so, yeah.
To answer Jack's question, if I may?
Sure.
The medical building is on at about 2.6 now, 2.6 million, which is about a 50% value.
Oh, good.
But we only had about 1.7 in growth because we had to take off the land value from that. But at full value, it should be somewhere around 4.5 million.
Oh, good, so you get another-
That'll be close to another 2 million in growth next year, just for that one property. And that doesn't include some of the other activity that's gonna be happening out on 1A with the new retail strip.
Yeah, we're hoping to have, slightly off-base, but the new Dunkin' Donuts and Subway on Route 1A, tax revenue will be, I don't know what the value of the building is, won't be, won't be, you know, but the meals tax will be nice. Hoping for a lot of volume in Subway.
So, I mean, what Jack is referring to also includes the filling station, the golf station, so, yeah, so, it's gonna be a nice, nice project. And, I mean, the developer of the medical office building said that it was a genuine pleasure to do business in Norfolk. I mean, he's got a nice building that obviously is very attractive, very desirable, given that it's fully leased. And hopefully, that bodes well for the future in terms of other developers looking to do things, you know, things that are consistent with what our town feels are.
And that one actually, that one actually will not only be good in terms of real estate value, but in terms of personal property value as well.
Oh, the medical building, yeah.
Okay, well, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve a single tax rate.
Is that the first mo-
That's what we need, right, is a motion to approve a single tax rate.
They need to, they need to make a decision on a single rate or a split rate.
Well, I think-
People down at the Eagle Park are watching.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. Well, I think, you know, the residential is such a large component here, and the message in terms of changing it, I just think is counter to what we're trying to accomplish here in terms of attracting development. And we are attracting development. It may be slow to come here in the center of town, but it's coming. So, I make the motion to continue with the single tax rate.
I will second. Any further discussion? Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mentioned Dunkin' Donuts earlier. I should've also mentioned Silla's, Silla's in the center of town is on its way, and will have more meals tax, and more importantly, a nice place to go have lunch.
Thank you, sir. This is what we have, right? Same thing? Yep, okay.
Well, this is for the single rate at 1786, and this has to vote for the governor in order to get the tax rate approved.
Whether we'll ever get to a split rate, John.
John, what do you, which forms do I need to do, do you know? Do you know off the top of my head?
Just these two forms is all you need?
Yes. It's a second copy of the same one.
Okay. You do a very thorough, nice presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm in it. Okay.
Uh, that would be good. Now that I know the date, thanks to Marion.
Do you want me to leave this book with you?
Could you? Just for a little bit?
Sure.
Let me, can you submit the LA, all right, well, I was gonna say, do you want me to, I'll submit the LA 5.
She needs one with their signatures, and the one that's online doesn't have their signatures. So, I scanned it, and she will know.
Okay.
So, I'll do the LA 5 and the newspaper that, and the tax recap, and see if we can send it up.
Did you read those?
Aye.
Surf, super. Just let me know if you need anything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John. Have a nice evening.
Thanks again.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Hathaway.
So, we also, the action item we have is please vote to approve the Norfolk Lions Annual Santa Parade on Sunday, December 7th, beginning at 2:45 PM at Hillcrest Village, and proceeding with afternoon events, which are outlined in the attached memo.
You're not gonna say no to Santa Claus, are you?
Absolutely not.
You'd definitely be on the naughty list if you did.
I'm putting it in the calendar, 2:45 at Hillcrest.
They have extended an invitation to have the selectmen participate in the parade this year. So, you're welcome to attend if available.
I think all three of us are going.
I'm telling you, watch out for those little kids throwing the hard candies. That's my only advice.
Especially the ones that play Little League.
Yeah.
You need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Yes.
So, a motion is made to support the upcoming Santa Parade.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is one of the nights where we have to agree.
Yes, yeah.
We're gonna table the DPW update till Scott's here. You have recap of special town meeting, do you?
Nothing unless you have a nice short meeting that seemed to go, I thought Mr. Tallman did a nice job moderating the meeting, and we made it through, and about 100 people participated. I didn't, actually, I didn't get the attendance.
Somewhere in that area, yeah. Which for a special was-
Not bad.
I just had one item to talk about, the governor's proposals.
Oh, which I think was the delay out stomped on, but-
Well, he stomped on, he stomped on the local aid piece. He can't stomp on the other part that's under the governor's control. And I had, I was curious how that was gonna impact King Philip because of the regional transportation component. They tell me that they're, while they, 16, it's a $16,000 hit to them, that proposed cut.
And the regional school, regional transportation doesn't have to go through the legislature?
Apparently not.
I don't know, I didn't realize that.
I thought it did.
I thought it would have, it's part of education.
But if you read the MMA bulletin-
I have it here, as a matter of fact.
It stated that the separate bulletin that came out on the web, they sent out an email, the two components, the school component was under the full discretion of the governor, as I read it. And KP read it the same way. But anyway, I guess, I don't know if you wanna call it good news, but the extent of the proposal is about a $16,000 hit to KP, which isn't overwhelming, you know. I thought it was gonna be worse than that, but according to the superintendent, that's what she calculates it, what the impact would be. And I hope the little, Delio stands firm and not allow that $40 million cut.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't get the, there's some politics that I don't understand, but why the governor would've taken that stance virtually in his last two months, you know, I guess he's trying to walk out with a balanced budget, I guess, but, yeah, I guess now maybe he can say, well, I had the resolution, and I was stopped, so.
And in terms of mitigation, have we heard anything in terms of what the impact?
We haven't. I'm hoping, I mean, because of that, I know, we all know, the governor controls that prison mitigation funds. He does not need legislative approval, so.
And that's due the end of November?
Yeah, yeah.
Now?
That comes in, yeah.
That's due the next week or two.
Late in November, early December, yeah. So, we'll keep an eye on it, hope it comes in. I just-
The other two checks are in the bank, right?
Yeah, the two from-
They cleared, didn't they?
Yeah, they cleared before year end. Yeah, we already audited them, and-
Okay. Well, we'll have to sit it out, I guess, and see, because that's exclusively in his discretion as well.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's part of the executive branch.
Okay, sir?
Just, no, just circling back to the special town meeting, I appreciate the job you did getting up and clarifying regarding what's happening here involving Borelli, and I think the concern that I had was that the discussion was taking place in kind of a narrow context, and it's a much broader context, you know, in terms of the waste treatment, wastewater treatment plant, and I think you did a good job clarifying that for the folks in attendance.
Excellent.
I would second that, and I think it would be a good thing to put that on our agenda for an upcoming meeting and go through that in detail for a lot of folks that weren't at town meeting. And now that we're over that hurdle, I think that it would benefit, I think, folks to hear the full story on, you know, the roads and everything that's going on up there, and what our next steps are.
Yeah, just a couple of the next steps, just since we're talking about it, they still have to go through, they still have to modify the zoning, the comprehensive permit through the zoning board.
Right.
So, they're working on that.
But they're supportive, I think, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, the zoning board was part of the mitigation, so, yeah.
So, that shouldn't be an issue.
Should not be an issue. It has to go through the open meeting process. It doesn't have to be a hearing. It doesn't have to go through the open meeting process. That's really just moving those, that $10,000 assignment for per- really just moving those, that $10,000 assignment for, per unit.
Right.
Which is $200,000.
The trade.
Yeah, and moving it over to the, the piece of property itself so that, so we can end up getting access to that money at the end of the day for, for road repair. The other thing that's going on is Bob McGee, DPW director, Phil McNulty, the superintendent, and the DPW and I are going to go meet with the DEP on December 3rd. They called us and invited us to come out and just talk about, we've already had discussions about the status of the, of the facility, but talk about the transition. And they want to give us some information, and then we'll provide them with how we think the transition will go, so...
You should look at the recap with me before you leave, if you have a chance. It says some business edits have failed.
Okay.
Sometime we can just say to submit it anyway, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, those are the things Julius would do memos about. Okay, I'll be down in, shouldn't be too long.
Okay. Sure. Good, that's it for me.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, all.
Yeah. Marion, we're meeting again.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, December 2nd.
Right.
So...
Would that be too soon to put the, well, we're going to do DPW, right?
Yep.
Yes?
Yep, yep.
Would it be too soon to talk more about the wastewater treatment plant?
No, it'll be fine.
Put that on as well?
Yep.
I just think it would be good, to Jeff's point, to go through all the details of that.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, better. Make the motion to adjourn.
Sec, any further, well, there is no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for joining us, and I hope everybody has a very, very healthy and safe Thanksgiving, and be careful tomorrow.
I second that. I don't have to travel.